Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 9th, 2024 Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting. It is now 7:04 PM. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now call the rolls, starting on by right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate commissioner.
Dominic Bonitia, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Leanne Brode, commissioner.
Romaine, commissioner.
Robert Westland, commissioner.
Nicole Luco, alternate commissioner.
Chuck Andrews, attorney for the commission.
Catherine Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator.
Grace Stroud, reporting.
Thank you. So, okay, before general public participation, I'd like to add an agenda to add an item to the agenda. Need a motion?
Motion to add an item to the agenda.
Just a clarification. We are trying to remove 707 Monroe Turnpike from the site development plans and subdivision plans. And we, I'm requesting that we add a discussion of the municipal exemption under the zoning and planning matters.
So I'd like to make a motion to add discussion of the municipal zoning exemption to the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Luco and second by Dominic.
Dominic.
Smiglino. Alright, so we'll add that for later. Next, we're going to general public participation. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address the commission on any item not on the agenda tonight, this is the time to do so. Please raise your hand if you're online or in person. Public participation is for the general public to ask or bring items to the attention of the commission that are not on the agenda. Please raise your hand if you have, would like to participate, have questions. I see none, then we'll move along. First public hearing is the site development plan subdivision plan, which has been removed. In its place, we're going to discuss the that you have in front of you.
I would like to do that actually at the end. If we can go, I apologize, I apologize. If we can go through the regular agenda items, I think that's more appropriate to be done under planning and zoning matters, under other business, and we can talk about it at that time.
Okay, then we do have this, we're going to close the public hearing then. There's no other public hearing.
There are no public hearings for tonight. The next thing on the agenda is under deliberations.
Under deliberations, we have SCP 2023-11, file 16598, 139, 141, and 201 Turkey Roost Road and 30 Todd Ross Hill. We reviewed this application last meeting and we directed staff to draft a approval with the what the changes that we wanted to see, the requirements that we wanted to see, which I believe she has done. Hopefully you've all been able to read it. At this point, I just would like you to go over the most salient points and then we'll continue with our deliberations.
So the draft agenda was circulated out. I would like to start with the conditions of approval located on page five. The agendas that are at your seats tonight do have a couple minor items that have been changed. Those are highlighted in red. Those came from discussions about how to address the unique situation of there are several phases associated with this project that were proposed. So we wanted to make sure the wordings reflected that, as well as there are both improvements occurring on-site as well as off-site associated with the water main installation. And so there was some clarification that was made that some of the crushing materials and things of that nature that was being done on-site, the conditions had noted about it staying on-site, but really it can stay on-site or be used off-site only in the items that are approved under this, under this application. So you'll see some of those items in red. So I'd like to go through each one of the conditions, if that makes sense, and see if there's any comments on each, because I know you're like proceeding. So page five, the first one is adherers to the town engineer's report dated 4/16/2024, including the posting of a bond in the amount of $177,600. The second is, as specified by the applicant, the project shall be served by public water supply. The site may similarly be supplied by other public utilities, which may be required to be installed under, if then, the travel way of Turkey Roost Road and other town streets. The permittee shall, upon the completion of all such service installations, restore and repave, in parentheses, overlay applicable portions of the town streets, including Turkey Roost Road, based upon the recommendations of the Department of Public Works, based upon the work completed as described in subsequent street opening permit prior to the start of construction. Such over-laid town streets shall meet the standards of the Public Works Department. That's just summarizing how to handle the installation of the water main and any other associated utilities that may be acquired once they continue with their permits. Should the development of the site be completed in sections or phases other than described on sheets D1 and D2, the developer shall convey the information to the P&amp;Z department prior to the initiation of work in a form of a plan clearly delineating the section lines. Sections used for sales and marketing shall coincide with those filed with the town. No arbitrary deviations shall be permitted. That has to do with some of the phasing documents. All road or sightline approvals as determined by the director of public works or town engineer shall be completed before the issue of any certificate of occupancy. Internal road grays or driveways leading to the town streets shall be paved to a driveway point of access to a dwelling unit before a unit is issued a certificate of occupancy. Again, because some of this is being done in phases, we want to make sure that access to each one of those units has been properly done. No topsoil shall be removed from the site upon completion of either the section or the project, except if utilizing connection with off-site work proposed under this approval. Excess materials may be authorized for removal by the director of public works, but only after determining the material is excess and not needed for the completion of work. Six, the planning and zoning commission authorizes a temporary construction and/or sales trailer for the duration of construction, subject to regulations, section 1.9.2. E. Seven, fire hydrant location shall be coordinated slash located by the Fire Marshal and Aquarian Water Company. Eight, a blasting letter will be provided to the 250-foot of butters within the two weeks prior to the start of blasting, providing a range of dates that blasting may occur and clearly outlining blasting warning whistle protocol. Also, nine, all sword and crushing and processing of materials shall be subject to the requirements of section 6.4.9. P. All materials shall be utilized on-site. No materials produced during crushing shall leave the site, except if utilized in connection with off-site work proposed under this approval. All underground fuel or similar storage tanks and apparatuses shall exist, shall be removed from the site and a certification provided to the commission of such removals and disposition. Eleven, the emergency access road shall be plowed immediately following snow weather events and be kept free and clear of any obstructions for emergency access. Twelve, the developer shall designate six units that will be subject to deed restrictions that qualify for the units as affordable deed restricted units, as calculated by Department of Housing pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 8-30GK2. A unit subject to binding recorded deeds containing covenants or restrictions which require that such dwelling units be sold or rented at or below the price which will preserve the units as housing, for which persons and families pay 30% or less of income where such income is less than or equal to 80% of the median income, where median income means after adjustments for family size, lesser of the state median income or the area median income for the area in which the municipality containing the affordable housing development is located, as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thirteen, with respect to the six affordable units described above, the applicant shall submit an affordability plan consistent with a description of affordability plans described in section 8-30GB1 and 2 governing the sale or rental of affordable units. Such plans shall include an obligation for the applicant or the sale or the sale or rental of the affordable units. Oh, I'm sorry, skip line. Such plans shall include an obligation for the applicant or the successors homeowners association to provide certification each instance a unit is sold, if compliance with the income limits and sale price of the affordable housing deed restriction. Fourteen, the applicant or homeowners association shall have the responsibility for the appointment of an administrator to ensure compliance with the income limits and sales price restrictions of affordable housing, of affordable units, and shall provide notice to the commission of the identity of such administrator. Such administrators shall provide a certification to the commission when any unit is transferred that the income limits and sale price restrictions required by the affordable deed restrictions have been satisfied. And fifteen, the unit numbering shall be coordinated such approved by the Town of Monroe's assessors office. That was added just based on a conversation with the assessors office today. They would just like to see how the units are laid out and some of these bigger developments and make sure it is coordinated with that. Again, there were some other minor changes on page eight that is highlighted in red, as well as page 10, and those had to do with the phasing, again, the clarification from those phasings. It was discussed as well. There was some requests by the applicant in order to have the CT deep approval for the septic system to be required prior to the construction of the units as compared to prior to site disturbance. Staff, myself, and the town engineer did not want to necessarily change our standard conditions, which has that as part of the approvals required prior to any sort of site disturbance. And especially for this project, one, we thought that it would be a bad precedent to change our standards of conditions. We understand that the deep process, approval process takes a long period of time. However, there is crushing and blasting associated with this project, and we didn't want to necessarily allow site disturbance to occur without an end date. You know, they have five years as part of this approval. We want to make sure that they're doing the blasting, the crushing, and then they're moving straight into construction of the units as compared to separating those two separate permits. However, this commission thinks that that's something they'd be willing to entertain. I'm happy to hear a discussion about it and we to comply as the commission sees fit.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we go into deliberations next. We've heard this project over the past few months, expensive. And as we all know, during the past 20 years, the applicant has owned this property. He's paid a lot of taxes on this property. He's also improved this property. There's quarries. They've had a few quarries in town. He improved this property, got rid of the quarry on his own. We saw Turkey Roost Road studies, one of them that was brought to us by the applicant. It was reviewed by our expert and they came to the same conclusion that the road can handle the increased amount of traffic. Unfortunately, there are going to be more schoolchildren brought into the system by this project. How many? We're not really sure. 80, 90, whatever it is. We can't use that as a basis or as a, really as a part of our decision-making on this process, on this process, because, on this application, because we're here looking at land use, not education. The applicant reduced the number of bedrooms by 81. He did this on his own. That was not a requirement. Asked about that. It's 20% reduction, which is a significant reduction in the number of bedrooms. So not only that, but it's well buffered, it's hidden away, and there's going to be an additional 31 acres of open space, more than is required by the application. So in my opinion, we should proceed with an approval on this application. That being said, any further discussion? So that's just a matter of the seated members of the commission.
Further discussion? Yeah, I was, like I said, I have a problem with the roll. I also had a problem with, Chuck mentioned about how the septic system is you have, is being used in two separate zones. And that, I don't think we ever did that, that town, the septic leaching fields in another zone. I mean, I think we had that issue down there with the
Gas station?
The gas station that was going across the water, and that got denied. It was going to the water. It may have been, because it was not going down the thing, because it was in a residential zone. Septic was going to be put on.
And there was a river in between the two.
There was a river where the pipe was going through there. But I mean, I think we set a precedence by, I don't know why the applicant wanted to came in front. May I like to see that regulation that we had?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to review the issue. Did raise it. I raised it at the public hearing. The applicant did respond. And I'll kind of review the specific regulations that I think that are at issue here. So there's, I, on this piece of paper, there's basically three regulations that are, that we're dealing with. The first is section 1.9.3. That's the one that says when you have a split zone lot, which is this is, you have one lot, but it's split between MF and the RF2. It says that the part of the development, you have to comply with the the zone that you're located in. So the development located in MF2 has to comply with the MF2. This part that's located in the RF2 has to be comply with the RF2. That's basically what it says. It says, so that you, that's what that regulation says. And what we have here is the the plan itself is located in the MF zone, but part of the leaching field is located in the RF2 zone. So, and those are structures, and the applicant agreed with that. So we have accessory structures, the leaching field, on the same lot, but in part of the lot that's located RF2. So that sort of begs the question, is that a violation of this regulation that says you got to comply with the with the zone where the development is located? The next, and when the developers, one of his principal responses is he points to section 1.9.4. And that's where, that's a section of the regulations that says, no portion of a lot, I can read it, in a residential district shall be used for any surface or subsurface principle or accessory use or structure on a lot or a portion thereof in a non-residential district, except subsurface lines connected public utilities. So what this is saying is, this covers split zone lots, and it specifically calls out when you can't have a septic or other accessory structure on a residential lot. And that's when you have a residential and a non-residential, and when you have a split zone, part of which is commercial industrial, part of which is residential. And in that case, it explicitly says you can't, in that case, put the septic for the, for the commercial component on the residential side.
So this is more specific, you said it?
That, that's in the regulations. That's what the regulation says. So what the applicant is saying is that, is how I read it, is by saying, look at where you specifically say that you can't do that when you have a split zone commercial residential lot, that you can't put the septic for the commercial on the residential side. It doesn't say that you can't do it for split zone lots. They're both residential. And so the implication is that that is permitted. That was what I, that's how, what I took the applicant's argument to be, that your regulation by saying that in the regulations implicitly authorizes the septics in split zone lots that are residential, both are residential, and these are, both MF and RF2 are residential, to, you can have that on the other side of the lot. So on the, so the MF, the septic serving the MF could serve, be located on the RF2, because they're both residential under that regulation. That's his, that's the applicant's argument, and there's some basis for inference for that, based on that regulation. The other regulation that I cited is, that's relevant, it's just a, it's a general regulation that said, unless the use is specifically allowed, it's prohibited. And that's typical in regulations. That's why you can't just say it's yeah, I want to do it, and the regulations don't prohibit it. It has to specifically say it's enumerated use. All of the regulations, by the way, allow accessory uses, and I'm considering the septic system to be a, an accessory use to this. So that is the, my understanding is that the other thing you said is, look, we approved it the first time in 2007, and we did the same thing. You approved it then. So there is precedent for allowing the septic part to be located in the RF2 when we did this in 2007. And one response to that is that the specific regulation, 1.9.3, and that's at the top, that's the one really that committed. This particular regulation wasn't in the regulations that were in effect when you approved it in 2007. That's split zone regulation. This showed up in 2013. That's why I was asking questions, what happened in 2013, whatever. So anyway, but I don't know. Maybe this codified existing policy, I don't, I don't know that. I don't know what it was. So there is an added feature that this regulation is in your current regulation. It wasn't in the 2007 application. So the idea of a precedent that you did it before for this site, I, I can't say, because again, the particular regulation that governed this. So my take on this is that this is a judgment call for you guys. He's, I think the applicant has given a plausible explanation of supporting his interpretation based on, basically 1.9.4, that the fact that it marks out commercial, that you can't do it for the split zone commercial residential, and that suggests that you could do it for split zone residential residential. There were some other arguments you made. I, he made a distinction between accessory structures and accessory uses, but I didn't think that was particularly relevant, because all accessory structure is, is is a structure having an accessory use. So they are connected, accessory use and structure. So that, that's your determination, and I, we, you know, the applicant did some research, look at other split zone lots. There is a lot where there is commercial residential, a number of lots, and he gave that in his, in his answer. And he found a couple where there were split zone residential. But in that case, there was no evidence that any part of the development was located on the, it was the ADD, the it was a higher, the age restricted was one, and I think, and part of it was an RF zone. And, but unfortunately, nothing was located on the RF portion of the property. So you couldn't, I mean, they exist, but you don't have that, you know, anything that's qualified that. So yes, that, that, that is my, I kind of throw it back to you guys, because I think that there are, you know, you can have a plausible interpretation that it supports it. To the reason you would say that it's against that ruling is you'd rely on this, and it says, look, it has to be, you know, it doesn't comply with that zone. You would make that ruling, although, you know, septic system, septic leaching fields are allowed in both zones as accessory uses, but again, it would be serving the higher density use, which isn't principal use allowed in the zone. So I, I don't have a definite story, but that, that's the general.
Have we ever run this in this town at all? And then I could never find, I didn't find anything on this that were.
I couldn't find, I mean, we looked, other than this application, you did it in 2006, but I don't know if that regulation was in effect, but you did do it in 2006 for this application. Couldn't find anything. The applicant couldn't find any split zone residential lot where this had happened. And, but I don't know. And again, there's, there's a history. There's a lot of new staff. I'm new. So there's, there's, you know, there may be some institutional history somewhere, but we couldn't find it. I looked at zoning amendments to regulations. Have these things been tweaked a lot? And I couldn't find anything particularly that was helpful.
The applicant really should have changed his own.
The applicant could have. He could have, he could have sought a zone change. He could have sought a text change that would make it explicit that the septic from one can be located in the other, to clarify the ambiguity, but but he hasn't done that. And, you know, I, whether he would want to do that, whether you would approve that is a separate question. That's, that would be a legislative determination.
I just have one more, one more question. On page five, you said that all roads and sightlines approval was determined by the public works or the town engineer. So that means any sightline issues on the road or just the sightlines coming out of the property?
Coming out of the property, so at that intersection. They just want to make sure that it's constructed appropriately so that there's no sightline issues in it, and you know, it meets their standards.
That's all I got.
Romaine?
I have a couple of discussion. I have a couple, couple of questions. One, I do understand that they're putting in some affordable housing, but is that, is that going to stay affordable forever, or is there a time period to it? Because in Trumbull, there was a big development that was done for affordable housing, and it's just expired and has become now not affordable housing.
The intent is that it's not time limited. There's no time restriction.
Where does it say that?
That it, when it is time restricted, it says it. That comes from the statute to get an 830G. It has, I think it's 40 years. But I, I put into the language on the affordable housing. I took that out, and there's no obligation to do it. So it's permanent. The deed restriction is permanent at the same time.
And if the property is sold before construction begins, and it's a bigger outfit, I understand that we have some guidelines in here, but how, how does that work?
How does it work with respect to the affordable housing?
No, no, just, just, I know we're going to phase this, or so-called phase this, but we've also run into issues in the past with phasing projects and.
Are you concerned that if it gets sold, that they're going to try to build all 99 units at one time? So there is something in the approval and execution portion of the code 3.4.12. In order to ensure the orderly development by staging construction of an MFR district over a period not to exceed five years, five years comes from the approval is four or five year period. The commission may limit the number of building permits issued in one year not to not over one-third of the total number of the units approved in the overall site plan. So if you wanted to create a condition in the approval that they cannot exceed one-third of the total units, if it's 99 units, it's 33. That would be something that we could add as a condition.
But one-third would be 33?
Still 33 units.
And then it's done in three years? Correct?
They could, yes. But I mean, they get it approved for five years. Now, they did say during the process that they did expect it to take longer than that. They have five years, and then they can do another five-year extension. I don't believe their intention currently with the team that they have right now is to do it that way, but that's the only real limitation that is outlined in the regulations.
Do we adjust that number? Instead of making a third, could we make it something different?
I don't actually know the answer to that. I mean, it's, it's it's interesting.
This project, this project's a lot for this town, so so I'm just concerned. It's a lot for this town on many, many, many different aspects. So I'm just concerned that what if it does get sold, because now they have an approval, and all of a sudden
Done in a year.
Toll Brothers comes in. They're not going to, they're sure, Toll Brothers won't come in here and be like, oh, we'll wait five years. That's not how they operate, but I'm just saying, what if it does? I would like to have a safety precaution in there to protect the town as well.
Let me, let me see this. Let me look at the plans. I do know that they have some phasing information. Let me see what that exact wording is, and if that's something that we can hold them to per the plans, you know, that's something that we can do and maybe do a condition. So give me, give me five minutes.
Five minutes? Sure, last five minutes.
Sure, last five minute sales.
Where's the gavel?
To gavel.
Mine's at home.
You didn't bring it.
You can bring the gavel.
It stays here. It is now seven forty three and we are reconvened time ago. Planning zoning special, uh, meeting on May ninth, twenty twenty four. Okay, we were in deliberations and we have some information from staff.
So they do have sequencing on here. It talks about, um, that they anticipate the construction to be done by twenty thirty. So, you know, they're talking about potentially six years, you know, to be able to do this. Um, after looking at the approval and execution, part of it where it talks about one third, part of the reason it's there is to allow them still to be able to construct within the five years. So we would put a more strict limit, more less than a third. If we told them that they had to only do twenty, you know, percent a year, they're not going to make that five year expiration. And we need to make sure that we are putting conditions in place that allow them to still construct it within the five years before their expiration expires. So anything more restrictive than a third, I think, would make it potentially not plausible to build. Cause they still have additional permits to get. They're still going to have to build the road and then they're going to have to construct all the units. And although I think they've led us all to believe that it's going to potentially take more than five years and they will most likely need to get an extension, um, we still can't create a condition where they can't build it within that five years.
Okay, you're telling me twenty percent of a hundred, they can't build in five years? To me, that comes up to a hundred.
But that would assume that they start tomorrow. They don't have all of their approvals. It's going to take them a year to get, you know, some of their additional approvals with deep and things of that nature. Then they're going to have to mobilize, they're going to have bonds, they're going to have to construct a portion of the road. You know, so I, I do think it's, it's more the water line, have the water line installed, things of that nature. So I think they have a heavy lift, um, on other things in order to prep the site in a way that they'll be able to connect some of these units to it.
Any other issues? Questions, discussion?
No, I just have a question for our attorney. I mean, we've heard, um, you know, in your description, we heard what the applicant's attorney said and, and we know what the regulations say and your interpretation of them. But what, what is your professional legal opinion on this matter? I, I don't want to let you completely off the hook here.
I, I think it's a somewhat ambiguous regulation. I realize that and I, 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 you know, and I, I, I think either one is defensible. And, and I, I think you need to look, it's not just this. You want to think of your own, you know, other applications where you may have applied it, what you think it, and what is good policy and be consistent.
Okay, septic deliberation, you have it? No, everything, uh, I said in the beginning. All right, so then, um, challenge, ten emotion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Westland. I, I need a second.
Second.
And I have a second by Condon, um, call the roll starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, no.
O'Reilly, yes.
Miami, no.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes three to two. Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, now we'll move on to the municipal exemption. You all know as much about this as I do. When Frank talked to everyone, they, basically, I think he did a straw poll, so we all good with this? Passing on to town council, a favorable opinion on this.
Yeah, I do give that.
Yes, so we're, we're good with a favorable opinion on this.
Do we have to vote on it?
Let's do it for good measure.
Want to do like a yea and nay?
Do we need a motion?
I, I'm going to say yes. Why not?
I'll attend a motion on, uh, moving forward with a, um, I'll make a motion to put forth a favorable referral.
Favorable referral.
Second to town council.
All right, for favorable referral.
Second.
We'll pull the walls down on my right.
Tom, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Miami, yes.
Westland, yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Well done.
Uh, we have one new application, which we did hear a little bit about, um, when we did the, um, MDD SDD.
We have an approved STD. They have six months in order to submit a special exception permit. That is what's in front of you. It will be on for a public hearing at the first meeting in June.
Do we have the minutes from four eighteen?
We do have the minutes from four eighteen. It should have been in your last package.
Challenge, ten emotion to accept the minutes of, uh, four eighteen twenty four.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting gender minutes of fourteen eighteen twenty four.
Okay, motion by Westland. And do we have second?
Second.
Second by Condon. Um, any changes to the meeting minutes? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay, it's unanimous. And it matters, none correspondents, stand chairman's report, I have none. Any commissioners reports?
I just, I just want to say, um, I think everybody here knows, um, on the fifteenth of April, my father passed. And I just want to thank everybody for reaching out and, uh, all your kind words. And, and it just meant a lot to me and my family through that tough time. Um, I really appreciate everything and, and I can't thank you guys enough for, for your kind words, the flowers and, and, and everything you did and the constant contact throughout, uh, even still to this day. So I just wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you.
Thank you. So last, we do have a zoning enforcement officer report.
I have my report if we can go through that first briefly and then we'll have Thomas start to come up in the meantime.
Oh, wait, hey.
Um, subcommittee meeting, uh, do we want to schedule, where was the request to, uh, schedule a subcommittee meeting? There's an item or two that wants to be on. We've been scheduling them on Mondays.
Yay, so we have a meeting next week.
So we have a meeting next week on six.
Gender, so far? I think so.
Oh, you approve Turkey Bruce tonight and seven oh seven is not anticipated to be heard on the sixteenth. So at the moment, I actually don't believe.
Next week, the thirteenth? Or the following week, twentieth?
Or the thirteenth?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Kathleen?
I don't know if they're, I, yeah, I don't know if they're ready.
That may be too close.
No.
Want to do the twentieth?
Um, ye- yes, yes.
Five thirty?
Five thirty on the twentieth.
We have, when's our next regular?
Next Thursday is a regular.
Um, is the twentieth the night we're at the delegate convention?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, the sixteenth, we have to come early though, right?
Yes.
Rye?
I'm not going to.
Rye.
Got a lot of meetings next week, brothers and ladies. It's, yeah.
But if we don't have a, we're going to have a planning in thirteen.
No, may not.
Kathleen, yes. I don't think we, I, based on how it went tonight, I don't think we need to. Two oh five is the upcoming application. It's not scheduled for a public hearing until June. So I think the meeting next week could be canceled.
You'll let us know? Or do you want to cancel it?
I think we could probably just cancel it tonight.
Make a motion to cancel the meeting on June sixteenth? Or May sixteenth, May sixteenth, May sixteenth? Cancelled, great, next?
I'm not coming on June sixteenth though.
All right, so we're going to cancel the second meeting.
We got a ton of those.
So we're going to cancel the meeting on the sixteenth.
We still have to come?
Yes.
Either way.
Um, the next item is at the subcommittee meeting, uh, there was conversations about doing a site walk at fifteen thirty six and fifty sixty four Monroe Turnpike in order to look at the, uh, potential cluster subdivision, um, application of that to the lot. Is that still something this commission is interested in doing? And do we want to have some preliminary dates that I can coordinate?
They have an application back in or not?
They have an application.
Wetlands?
Uh, they don't have anything in front of planning and zoning at the moment.
Oh, wetlands?
Their next step is most likely to go back to wetlands, yeah.
Might be.
So in the meantime, but they would like to parallel processes simultaneously because I would like this commission's opinion on how they are applying the cluster subdivision regulations to this property to see if this commission is.
Let's schedule that.
Okay, uh, what days of the week do you guys normally do site visits?
What time of the day would it be?
I mean, it's a vacant site, so it's really dependent on, on you guys.
Even after work.
Yeah.
Yeah, five thirtyish.
Okay.
Still light, uh, fine time.
Um, do you want to give me a couple of dates and I can email and coordinate with everyone? Or do you want to just pick a?
Why, I mean, is it possible to do it before our subcommittee like that same day?
Oh.
I mean, it just, for me, it kind of, I think it works, works better.
Yeah, they, they would like to be in attendance, um.
Can we all show up?
Like four thirty?
Yeah. We just can't talk?
I have to notice it as a special meeting and I would have to get their permission if there's going to be three or more people showing up.
But what happens?
The public has it, the public has to be able to attend if there's quorum. We have to notice it as a special meeting in compliance with the FOIA regulations. And the applicant has to grant us permission and based on everything that has happened, or you guys don't know this, there was a resident that trespassed on the property during the previous application in front of wetlands. Um, illegally trespassed on the property. So the applicant and the owners are not, um, they would be fine with the commission coming on, um, but they, I doubt would be too keen on allowing, uh, such a situation where the public would be able to access it.
So if we were at all, all the come the same day, it would have to be staggered.
Correct.
That can't be put under an executive session?
No.
What address is this?
Fifteen thirty six, fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike. Um, it's potentially, uh, eight, eight or nine lot subdivision, um, single family residential.
What if we stay six feet apart?
I think, I think you're.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, same day, what's it, twentieth at four thirty? That's an option, just throw it out there.
Yeah, so I'll talk to them about the twentieth, um.
What, thirty?
And then if somebody has another time that they want to go, um, so we can start to stagger, yeah, please let me know. And I think it sounds from this commission that we are going to try to not go as a commission and we are going to go individually or in groups of two.
Okay.
Beautiful.
That's usually what we had done in the past.
Which is, is fine. Uh, actually, the, um, CTD put out a really good, um, summary of, of, of sidewalks and things of that nature, what's acceptable and it, it, that is acceptable. Um, we got an inquiry from a residential owner for a property um, where they would like to create basically a flag lot. There is a condition in our regulations that says that, um, the town will entertain interior lots, flag lots, but that it has to come in front of the commission for approval. I don't necessarily have, and there's not like a strict, um, list of like what the commission would like to see. So this is me inquiring to this commission of if someone were to come in trying to prove that they wanted to subdivide their property that would include a flag lot, what would you guys want to see? Obviously, you'd want to see a survey and a subdivision plan, but do you want them to prove out that both lots are developable? And if the answer to that is yes, which I would imagine it would be, like, how far do you want it to take it? Do they have to do test holes for septic? Do they have to, you know, is it a, is it a true, like, full build out? Or you're okay with generally a conceptual plan?
I didn't go through this at length.
Well, the building department will require a.
We had made it loud, yeah.
So we just need to see.
They would require it when a house is being built.
Which is going to happen.
That's.
Eventually.
It could happen eventually, but you also want to make sure that you're not approving a subdivision that's not an actual buildable lot.
We need to see conceptual plans.
At the very least, you need to see conceptual plans. But the question is, do you want them to test out septic? Like, do you want them to actually?
Sorry, uh, health, for subdivisions, health will require, um, test pits and septic designs in order to prove the feasibility for the lots.
As part of their review of the subdivision application?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
All right, so it'll be covered under that.
What would the negative be if we approved the subdivision and it's not a building lot?
They sell it and now someone can't build upon it. But you would have hoped that someone would do their due diligence.
Yeah, so we're just protecting a future sale of a unbuildable lot.
But I do the same thing, like, like I can approve what's called a first cut. Like, I can approve if there's a lot that's been in existence prior to, um, the existence of our subdivision regulations, they're entitled to a first cut. So as long as they meet all the bulk standards, they can subdivide the property into two. Um, and I'm kind of the same way, like, I don't necessarily make them do test holes for that just to do from one lot to two lots. Um, there's a little bit at their own risk, um, but yeah, they have to prove out, you know, a portion of that. But they would be coming to you, it would be kicked it into a subdivision category. So they have to meet the subdivision regulations, um, for it. And yeah, like, like James said, I guess health department will look at it from that perspective. All right.
We will be, we would be approving a subdivision then.
Yeah, because it's a non-conforming lot.
They have to follow all the subdivision regulations.
I have to, there's, there's some specific language in there about interior lots. I'd have to look into that a little more, um, clearly, but yes, I, for the most part, yes, they would have to comply with the lots. Um, but they just wanted to know, does this commission basically entertain flag lots? Is that something that they've done? I've looked at the property and there's a lot of flag lots in the neighborhood. So it's pretty common for like the design vernacular of the neighborhood.
We had put it in a few years ago and I think.
Yes.
My memory was, it was, we still wanted to, one, they weren't allowed originally. And then we were like, oh no, we want to, for sightlines and access, we wanted to make sure we were looking at, and then density, I think.
And also cul-de-sac, we didn't want to be.
Yeah.
A bunch of cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, so that's why we still wanted to look at them and it was just, you know. Yeah, it's like, this is a dumb place to have a new driveway popping out or something like that.
They make the effort to do it, that it's something that the commission would entertain and has potentially.
Yeah, we're not going to say no flag lots. You know, you can't tell us where it is first. You want to wait?
Uh, it's ninety one Wheeler Road.
Yeah, oh, and you said there's other flag lots.
There are other flags on Wheeler. Yeah, okay, beautiful, I will get back to that. We have our zoning enforcement officer with us tonight and he is going to give a summary of some of the, um, larger enforcement, um, items that are currently being reviewed from the planning and zoning department.
Evening, lady, gentlemen. It's Thomas Noonan, I don't know if you guys are aware of that. Started on March third, so we're going to do a review of March, April and the beginning of May. I did include this, um, your packets, if you want to look over it. If there are any questions, please let me know and we'll go right into it. So one thirty six Barn Hill Road, we received a zoning complaint form on three nineteen twenty four for blight. I did investigations on April twenty third, April twenty fourth and April twenty sixth. Found persistent garbage accumulated next to the garage in an air conditioning unit on the front lawn. I also discovered that this was, uh, the second zoning complaint form that was issued by the same resident for this. I also discovered that this was, uh, the second zoning complaint form that was issued by the same resident for this same uh, house, one thirty-six Barn Hill Road, with very similar, uh, verbiage in both of the zoning complaint forms. Uh, they pretty much said that the house was in a state of disrepair, that it was a complete disaster, and that, um, the yard was so overgrown that bobcats were living there. That's why I decided to go out there and take a look. Uh, it didn't seem nearly, no, didn't seem nearly as bad as what the zoning complaint form actually said. But, um, according to our blight regulations, uh, there was persistent garbage accumulated on the property. And, um, the air conditioning unit that was on the ground, um, is also a part of, uh, the blight ordinance. So I sent a request for voluntary compliance on four twenty-nine regarding the above-mentioned issues. And I also mentioned town code section four oh five seven A seven, uh, because the house could potentially be in a state of disrepair regarding seriously overgrown brusher shrubs or weeds at least one foot in length that may pose a significant public health or safety risk. Uh, pretty much in response to the potential bobcats or wildlife that could be living on the property. Uh, so I gave them fourteen days, um, to complete the work and respond to the zoning department. The fourteen days is up, are up on, uh, May sixteenth.
Get to talk to the homeowner?
I did not get to speak to the homeowner, no. So two oh seven Barn Hill Road, a notice of violation was sent on four sixteen regarding our excavation and fill regulations. Um, this was, uh, brought to my attention through our town engineer. Apparently, he received a few complaints from, uh, the, the neighbors of two oh seven Barn Hill Road that live on Bradley Drive. Um, we determined that there is possibility of changing the contours of elevation of two feet or greater resulting in having an adverse effect on drainage or of adjacent and surrounding properties. Uh, the homeowner actually came in, the homeowner of two oh seven Barn Hill Road came into the town hall on April twenty-sixth to figure out a proper resolution to the matter. He hired a land surveyor, uh, to comprise surveys showing pre-existing conditions, cer- current conditions, and proposed final conditions, and our intention of this is to figure out the best way to, um, find stormwater management practices. So, uh, it's not having an adverse effect on the neighbors on Bradley Drive. Cause Barn Hill Road is, um, pretty much uphill from Bradley Drive. So all the rain and storm waters kind of going down onto their properties. And now he did all the excavation, um, they've really nothing to hold the stormwater back from kind of flooding Bradley Drive properties. So, two sixteen Cutler's Farm Road, there have been ongoing, uh, zoning compliance issues uh, dating back to March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there was an original, uh, notice of violation set regarding, I believe, five separate zoning violations including the storage of commercial vehicles, storage of construction material, um, a boat that was stored within the required setback areas and not suitably screened. And there was a home occupation sign that was installed on the front of the lawn without a permit. Um, there was an order to cease and desist issued on five two of twenty twenty-three for the same bump mentioned violations. Five six twenty twenty-three, um, a violation plan was put in place by the tenant. Apparently, um, the individuals living there, they're not the actual property owners, uh, the homeowners. They're, they're the tenants, the homeowners, I believe, are the, uh, in-laws of, uh, the gentleman who is in constant violation of our zoning regulations. Uh, but he did issue a plan, um, submitted to the former CEO, Cheryl Valerie, and a second order to cease and correct was actually issued on February eighth of this year uh, regarding, I believe, four separate zoning regulations. Um, pretty much including the boat still being within the required setbacks, no suitable all-year screening. He still continued to, uh, store commercial vehicles on his property. And he's pretty much telling us that he's storing the commercial vehicles on the property uh, because he has open building permits to, uh, renovate his garage and he needs these commercial vehicles in order to do that, um. Seeing, so he's in response to the second cease and correct order that was issued on February eighth of this year, the tenant responded, um, with an email dated two twenty-eight of twenty twenty-four and stated that the current project, um, had, like I said, he had open building permits and he would, should complete the work within ten to twelve weeks' time. So as of yesterday, uh, May eighth, twenty twenty-four, that is the start of the tenth week. So yesterday, I issued a letter to the actual homeowners, um, saying that I need an exact date of when this work is gonna be done, and when these vehicles are gonna be removed from the property. And that he's also going to have to schedule an inspection with the building official, so we can close out these permits and not have these, uh, commercial vehicles constantly in a residential district, uh. I already spoke to legal counsel about this, and if they don't comply, we're going to, uh, issue citations for zoning violations including, uh, fines, uh, for any of the violations that he continues to have it here to. Eighty-two Hannah Lane, a notice of violation was sent on May eighth of twenty twenty-four for operating as a landscaping business within a residential farming district, RF three. Uh, first complaint was received on May fourth of twenty twenty-three. Second complaint was received on April third of twenty twenty-three. And I spoke with a third neighbor yesterday, May eighth of twenty twenty-four, regarding the noise and the amount of disturbance that was taking place at the property. Apparently, um, there has been a clearing of a lot between eighty-two Hannah Lane and the neighbor that I spoke with yesterday, and because all the trees and debris have been cleared, uh, the amount of noise that eighty-two Hannah Lane, um, is conducting is really kind of become a nuisance to the individuals living on Hannah Lane and on Cutler's Farm Road as well. Uh, so I issued the notice of violation after I did some research, uh, seeing that there's no special exemption permit on file, allowing uh, the homeowner at eighty-two Hannah Lane to operate as a landscape, landscaping business. And there's also no zone change application on file, which would permit such a use as well. Uh, the business is listed as an LLC landscaping service through the State, uh, State of Connecticut, and that was filed on February twenty-third of this year, twenty twenty-four. I believe he has, uh, fourteen days to respond to me, uh, so we can figure out a way forward to not have him operate as a landscaping business in a residential and farming district. Nine oh nine Main, uh, Main Street, um, during routine inspections, uh, conducted on April sixteenth of this year, I found several potential violations of the excavation and fill permit, uh, EFP twenty twenty-two O two. According to, uh, the permit, the commission determined the need for the applicant to keep daily records of imported material. The applicant shall provide a log and submit the law, uh, monthly log to the zoning enforcement officer, uh, to this date. Uh, four nine twenty twenty-four, no monthly logs have been submitted. The one hundred-foot upland review area was not staked out in the field by a surveyor. There's been no installation of a two-row temporary silt fence found on the lot. No, uh, installation of a temporary sediment basin number one, temporary sediment basin number two, or temporary sediment basin number three were found. And I, uh, sent a certified letter of, with a notice of violation, um, to the individual who, uh, was the applicant for nine oh nine Main Street. I have not heard back from them yet. Five ninety-six Monroe Turnpike, request for voluntary compliance was sent on four twenty twenty-three regarding landscaping and fencing causing sightline issues for traffic. The homeowner was given ten days to contact the zoning department with a plan to remediate the situation. The homeowner sent a letter to the zoning department on four twenty-seven twenty twenty-four stating the sightline issues will be addressed and that five ninety-six Monroe Turnpike is actually considered a certified wildlife habitat, certified by the National Wildlife Federation. And that's part of the reason why she doesn't, is hesitant, I would say, to cut back, um, the brush and the landscaping from the fence, but that is causing some pretty significant, uh, sightline issues for traffic. I have, uh, received some, um, residents have come in and talked to me about how it is an ongoing issue. Uh, so that's why I sent the request for voluntary compliance. She did not give me a date when she's actually gonna do the work, so I do need to respond to her, to get some definitive dates so we could, uh, remediate the issue. Fifteen Oak Ridge Road, a notice of violation was sent on four twenty-six twenty twenty-four regarding blight, articles, uh, two, section four oh five seven A eleven, uh, significant and persistent accumulation of de- uh, debris bordering adjacent properties. Uh, this was, uh, in response to the neighbor at two twenty-eight Old Newtown Road. Um, two twenty-eight Old Newtown Road actually erected a fence on the property boundary of fifteen Oak Ridge. However, the finished quality side of the fence did not face outward from the premises towards the neighboring property, which is against our zoning regulations. And so the homeowner of fifteen Oak Ridge Road submitted his own zoning complaint on eleven fifteen of twenty twenty-three regarding the fence, however, um, after the fence was erected, the homeowner of fifteen Oak Ridge Road erected this barrier of junk and debris on his side of the fence to make it extremely difficult to flip the fence. The homeowner of fifteen Oak Ridge Road has until five sixteen of twenty twenty-four to remove the debris, allow his neighbor to flip the fence to get in compliance with Monroe's zoning regulations. We also noticed on the property, uh, I went out and did an inspection of fifteen Oak Ridge Road with our building official, John Morris. And John Morris issued a notice of unpermitted work to fifteen Oak Ridge Road regarding a potential accessory dwelling unit above a detached garage. Um, the homeowner of fifteen Oak Ridge Road did come in, I believe, yesterday or two days ago. Did admit that there is an actual accessory dwelling unit with a full kitchen, with a full bathroom and a bedroom in there. None of the work was permitted, uh, by the zoning department or the building department, so we're gonna have to work with them, um, to get, get rid of the ADU essentially, we're gonna have to, uh, pretty much get rid of the stove top and the oven. And that will get them in compliance with our ADU regulations. Um, but apparently, um, the issues between fifteen Oak Ridge Road and two twenty-eight Old Newtown Road are civil disputes that have been going on for about ten to twelve years. They've gone, uh, port, um, with each other plenty of times, and, uh,
They love each other.
They love each other. One fourteen Old Zor Road, a notice of violation was sent on four twenty-three of twenty twenty-four for operating as a landscaper within a residential farming district in RF two. Landscaping businesses are only authorized to operate in an I two zone. After conducting research, I determined that there was no special exemption permit or zone change application on file, which would permit such a use. The property owner was supposed to contact the zoning department by five six of twenty twenty-four, and has not done so. I believe the homeowner of one fourteen Old Zor spoke to the first selectman uh, about the notice of violation that I, I was sent, I had a conversation with the first selectman. Apparently, the landscaping company does some plowing for the town. Uh, they've been operating as a landscaping business for several years. Uh, the father started the business, the son took it over and kind of expanded it, uh, in the residential district. Uh, so knowing that, um, because the son, the current homeowner of one fourteen Old Zor, he didn't respond to my outreach in my letter, he went kind of above my head and spoke to the first selectman. I sent a second notice of violation yesterday on May eighth, and because I just wanna create some form of communication with them so we can kind of get on the same page, so I could see exactly what he's doing on his property. And, um, I'm gonna take it from there, but I wanna have some type, type of communication with him. I don't want him to go over my head and just speak with the first selectman on the one that's issuing the notices of violation to him.
Good to you.
Lastly, we have four seventy-nine Wheeler Road. A zoning complaint form was received on five two of twenty twenty-four regarding a family living in a recreational vehicle that was parked on the main road with a generator that was running twenty-four seven, causing the complainant to lose sleep on a nightly basis. An investigation was conducted that same day on five two twenty twenty-four. And I found that there was a valid building permit, valid zoning certificate of compliance on file for the renovations be, being conducted at the house. And after conducting an investigation of the property, there was no generator that was found connected to the RV, there's an RV there. It's a hundred feet off the property, and that only, um, one of the homeowners is staying in the RV while he is conducting the renovations to the house himself. What I heard from John Morris, our building official, is, uh, the family used to live in Stanford. They put their house on the market, sold a lot quicker than they anticipated, and so they didn't really have anywhere to live while they were doing these renovations. Uh, so his wife and his two children, I believe, are living with one of the in-laws. And then he's living in the RV himself while he's conducting these renovations. And, uh, the building department, uh, told me that he has no issues with the homeowner staying in the RV while the, uh, renovations are being conducted. And apparently, he, the, um, new homeowner for seventy-nine Wheeler Road, um, is pretty friendly with all the surrounding neighbors. They don't really have an issue with him living in the RV. Like I said, there's no generator attached to it. Um, apparently, the resident who filed the complaint lives about two streets down from four seven nine Wheeler Road, so I'm not too sure how he's losing sleep over this generator that is not in good sense.
Did they give a timeline on the renovations?
Uh, no, but I could check with the building official and figure out if that is in our, the building permit. Is there a question?
You gotta come up and name and record for this.
You're as, as long as you're okay with someone speaking.
Snyder, I live at two ten Cutler's Farm Road. So I live next to two sixteen Cutler's Farm Road. I filed. I filed initial complaints. That anywhere in point twenty-three. Tom has been able to make some progress, and I'm deeply appreciative of what he's been able to do. But I've been extremely patient with this tenant that lives next door. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. It's box trucks, bobcats, mini excavator, cherry picker, boats, multiple trailers, and about two months ago, a tractor trailer with a roll-off dumpster showed up and is parked there. And he works on it and grinds away at it and moves it back and forth. What do they have? They have that emergency backup warning system, right? Beep, 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 beep. My, I live, I guess it's a flag lot, back lot.
He lives behind two sixteen.
So my, my driveway is parallel to the two sixteen's southern lot line. And all of this garbage is parked in the corner of his yard, not for him to see, for me to see every day. And it's, and it's maybe twenty, thirty feet from the front of my house. That beep, 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 beep drives me crazy. I can hear it throughout the house. Grinding metal out of the dumpster goes on for, for hours at a time. February ninth, twenty twenty-three. And at least two cease and des- desist orders, and nothing happened with the first one.
Sounds like this, some movement now with possible fines coming up.
And he, he was given additional ten to twelve weeks when he had already a year. He's a bad, he's a bad guy. He's belligerent, he was belligerent to Tom and others. And, I, like I said, I've been extremely patient, but I shouldn't have to live next to what is now. There's a, there's a garbage dump. He washes that garbage, that, that dumpster and works on it. Has people, I guess, from his company working there. This is Monroe. This shouldn't happen, this shouldn't happen feeding from my doorway. And I'm so appreciative of the diligence Tom has shown to, to, to get something to happen. But it's, it's been a long year and three months, and this, this is just. Year and three months, and this, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There are others only about issue. I hope. Extremely, and I don't, I don't hate this is bad. Day one, after twelve weeks, he doesn't come back and say, well, I need more back. No. A year and three months. Plenty of time. And it's based on a, a garage, work, needs, needs that stuff to, to work on the garage. It shouldn't have been built to begin with. Thank you, Tom. Um, and I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Uh, hey, Tom, feather flags. Be pulling those? Cause I'm now seeing new ones popping up. There's ones with like body parts and they say massage on them.
I haven't been pulling those. I've been pulling uh, the construction and the, you know, the temporary.
The feather, the feather.
They need to come on. Main, Main Street is horrible too.
That's, that's, yeah. Now they have body parts on them.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty bad.
You don't need a bunch of feet flying around on flags. That's what we got on one eleven now.
One eleven we got on Main Street too.
Right by the country people that, that. That country. Yeah, it like popped up. It's like, what is this?
Well, thank you for that. It's very uh, good, very complete. Something we've been looking for.
Yeah, that's good I made as well.
Welcome aboard.
On the other business. General, want to adjourn?
Post to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Who was that second?
I'm browsing.
It's everyone.
Pick one, anyone.
Your call.